And we will. We will make this available on the. Oh, glory to the righteous WhatsApp group. And if you guys want this worksheet that we're looking at. Uh, if you see my screen, if you want this worksheet, uh, make sure I have your email and I will send you a copy of the worksheet so you can look at it at home, print it out, do your own study of it. Okay? If at any time, uh, I start talking too fast or you can't hear me or something happens, please interrupt me. Uh, if you have a question, please interruption me. Don't, uh, don't sit there and not get your question answered because this study session is designed to be a lot slower paced than Sora's class so that everybody can get an understanding. So I want to make sure everybody gets understanding. We're gonna start the class by raising the ark. Uh, the raising of the ark verse comes from Numbers, chapter 10, verse 35. So if you will humble your spirits, nala heish stakavoh. We're going to read the Numbers, chapter 10, verse 35. As I read it, I'm going to highlight the syllables. So starting off, we have. Kuma. Kuma. This here is. Kuma. Yahua. Kuma Yahua. Yahua, of course, is one of our side words. Kuma Yahua. Then we have ve. Ya. Fu. Su. Ve yah fu su. Ve yah fu su, yes. Ve is a word which means and. So rise up. Kuma, rise up, ya, take action on our behalf is what it really saying, rise up, rise to action, kuma yahua. And. Right? Ya fu su. This is ya. Ya. And then we have the fey with the shuk underneath it makes the u sound. I'm sorry, this is the kaboots. The fey with the kaboots. The kaboots has the three diagonal dots underneath it, boots. Um. It makes the u sound like a double O or u sound. Ve yah fu. And then this one here is the shuruk. And the shuruk makes the u sound as well. So here you have in this word. You have both of the nikuns that make the u sound. And somebody might ask, well, when do you know? When, how do you know when to use the kaboots or the shuruk? And my answer to that is you really don't need to know when to use it because you're never right using them. You understand? Um, the nikun is just there to help you. So. All you have to be able to really is recognize what each of the nikun is trying to say. What information is it trying to give you? And so we have an u sound right here and we have an u sound right there. They both make the same sound. Hard to distinguish between the kaboots and the shuruk. So don't even try to distinguish between them. They make the same sound. So we have. Say it again. So we have ve ya fu zu. Ve yah fu su. Okay? Ve yah fu su. Then we have here, oh, and we know that the aleph is silent or doesn't really carry a sound, but this dot above it here, this little dot is called the holam. Holam makes the o sound. So because the aleph is silent, it care- the sound of the syllable carries this little dot, it's o sound. So. And then, of course, this thing underneath the aleph. This here is called a cancellation mark. Um. For some reason, they tried to sing some of the Bible verses. And they put cancellation marks there to try to help them sing as far as like singing like a song, like the song of David or a song of Moses, they actually tried to sing them. And so these cancellation marks are what this, what this are, this what these are here. And you'll see these sometimes in the scripture. Um, you can just ignore them. It's, it's a whole, it's totally different from the nikun system. Okay? Uh, I could really, so I wanted to, I could erase it. Alright, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't, it means nothing for us, okay? Um, but we have oh. And then we have e. Ve. E. Ka. Oe ve e ka.
Oe ve e ka.
Yes, ma'am. Um, let me see how I can do this. Let's put a space here. Let's do it like this way. Maybe this way it works. No, it keeps doing that. Alright, what I wanted to do was I wanted to break this into syllables. Maybe if I go to a different line. Alright. Nope, it's not working. I'm not gonna do it. Alright, I'll do it like this. Want me to do it the long way? So. We have oh.
E.
E. Let's put e there. Then we have ve.
Eh.
Then we have e again. And then we have. Ka. Okay? Oe ve e ka. Kuma Yahua. Ve yah fu su. Oe ve e ka. And then we have the ve again. Remember ve means and. Right? Ve ya. And then we have the same. We have that same repeating of the syllable there, right? The same way we had the fu su. Now we have the nu su. You can, you can see how the kaboots under the nu and under the fey. And then over here, we have the shuruk. Right? So this is ve yah fu su. And then over here, this is ve yah nu su. Ve yah fu su, ve yah nu su. Ve yah fu su, oe ve e ka, ve yah nu su. Ve yah nu su, mi san ne e ka. Mi pa ne e ka. Let me read it for you one more time. Kuma Yahua. Ve yah fu su. Oe ve e ka. Ve yah nu su. Mi san eh e ka. Mi pa ne e ka. This here is, again, this line here is a cancellation mark. I'm gonna erase it. Alright, that's a cancellation mark. That's not part of the nikun. So this is a rise up ya or rise to action ya and let your enemies be scattered, alright? And let those that hate thee flee from before thee, right? Panin is your face. Let them flee from your face. Panin is face. Let them flee from your face. Alright, so the divine citation is how we generally open up um, every time we meet. Uh, if you're part of the kingdom of you're around from intermedia kingdom protocol, uh, is, I'm just, is this redundant? I don't know who is who in here. So that's just one of our opening greetings we do every time we officially meet. So we'll go over this probably every class just as a refresher course and you guys will start to memorize it. Alright? Let's move forward.
Sneak on more.
Yes.
We do go back to the, um, raising the ark, please. La fishtah. I'll higher up.
A little higher up.
Yes, Ken, Ken. Alright, so. Oe ve e ka. Am I saying it correctly? Oe.
Oe, yes.
Yes, what is making that e sound? Just the u because?
The u, yes ma'am. The u is making the e sound.
Or, and also that u, that there's no mark below it, they still makes e sound.
It, it still makes the e sound, yes ma'am.
Oh. Okay. I, so. Ud sung in e. I would say that.
So the u, the u can make an e sound and it can also make a y sound. The u can also be a vowel. Now, how do you know when the u makes the y or the e sound? You just have to be familiar with the word.
Okay.
You have to be familiar with the word. But you're gonna see some, let, let me go to the next slide here and you're gonna see exactly what I'm talking about. Watch. Uh, Hebrew for beginners, lesson two, reading the nikun and breaking syllables, okay? That's what we'll be doing today is reading the nikun and breaking up the syllables. Now here's what I wanted to show you. Vowel recognition. Let me zoom out a little bit so we can see the whole thing. Alright, vowel recognition. So, uh, Sister Sarah, you were the one, I think, maybe was it you that asked me about the e? Look at this. We, so, we know English, a, e, i, o, u. And if you're familiar with Spanish or Latin based languages, um, you know that the vowels are a, e, o, u. So here you have what I was telling about the shuruk and the kaboots making the u sound. And this is gonna be more of a, like a double O sound, but it's a u. So you can, you can write it. I write it as a u because when you write it, when you're transliterating, the double O takes up too much space. But it makes a double O sound as in like food or good, right? Uh, so you have the, the kaboots here at the top and then you have the shuruk. They, they both make the u sound. Here you have the holam. Remember, the holam is the dot above the aleph. In this instance, aleph is only used as a placeholder. So you can erase these alephs and you can put any Hebrew letter in there in place of the aleph, but I use aleph as a placeholder. So here you have the holam. Then you have the holam vav. And you also have just a vav could be o as well. Give me one second, guys.
Hey, guys, I'm recording, guys. Bye, guys.
Alright, I'm back. Sorry about that, guys. We have the e sound, right? Now, the e. Yes, sir.
Um, the aleph with the vav. Um, how do you know where that makes an o sound?
So. That, that's a good question. So the rule that I have given my class is this. Anytime, whenever you see the aleph and the vav like this, you always give it an o sound.
Okay.
Alright?
Okay.
You always give it an o sound.
That's actually a word.
Yes. Yes. So aleph and vav is actually, uh, the word or in Hebrew. Right? Now, if we were to put, like, for instance, if we were to put a, a rash right there, this word here is uh-oh. This word here is lights. Alright? I gotta do it like that because I'm, I'm in Hebrew. I gotta switch my keyboard over. Uh, this word here would be light, right? Or, I'll do it again. Lights, like that. Right? Or. Right? Kumii uri, right? Uri, mean, uh, let your light shine. So, um. You know? Whenever you see the, uh. Give me a second, there we go. Whenever you see that vav and that aleph together, they always make the o sound. Now, in the column here for e, we have the, this little dot underneath is called the shiddich. No, there's no quiz over what it means, over what it is. I'm just, I'm just, that's for you for you to see, so, so you can. Yeah, go ahead.
Um. If the aleph and the vav making the o sound, is that dependent on position in a word or anything? That's a general rule. Is it like at the beginning of the word, middle and?
Uh, no, whenever you see it, expect, so, so, here's the thing. Most of the time, when you read Hebrew, there are not gonna be any nikun.
Okay.
Alright? So if there are no nikun, if there are no dot critical marks, then just assume that that combination is o.
Oh, okay.
Okay? If there are nikun, they're going, they're not gonna use the nikun half of the time. They're gonna use the nikun the full time. So if there are nikun on the reading, you're reading, then you can just defer to what the nikun is saying. If there are no nikun, then you just assume it's o. Okay?
Yeah, Toda.
Alright, um. I'm trying to do a little typing here, but it's not working with me, but that's okay. Um, so this word here, we're, we're in the set, the third, the middle column, looking at this right here. And that little dot is called the shiddich. Um, yeah, the shiddich, shiddich. Now, the other thing in this column here, this thing that I typed before, this is called the holam. Holam and shiddich, okay? I wanna write this out so that you guys can see it. Now, you also have the kaboots and the shuruk. Okay, the shuruk is this thing here. The shuruk is not just a dot. The shuruk is the vav and the dot. Okay? The shuruk is not just a dot. The shuruk is the vav and the dot. The kaboots is just the three dots underneath right here. That's the kaboots underneath. The, the, the aleph is just a placeholder. The holam. The holam is just the dot above the aleph. And then you have another thing called the holam vav. Now, the holam vav is the holam with the vav. So, we are right now, I want us, I want us to be like elbow deep in the nikun, right, for the first part of this lesson. Because once you commit the nikun to memory, once you start to memorize the nikun, then you start being able to, what, what we call in language acquisition, you start to be able to decode the language. Alright? Cause the alphabet is one system. The spelling of the words itself is one system, right? And then the secondary system is the nikun system. And those two systems put together is how you are able to read Hebrew. So you have to be able to decode these systems. And that's why it's important to learn with the nikun. Now, i- in Israel, grade school students learn with the nikun, first grade, second grade, and third grade. And then if you are not proficient with the Hebrew reading without the nikun, they do allow you to continue with the nikun supplementally in fourth grade and fifth grade. So I, I, I say that because I don't want you to think that familiarity with the nikun is something that can happen overnight. They take years to really get comfortable with the nikun before they start to remove the nikun from the writing system. So. The same way here you have, you have the holam. And then you have the holam vav. And then you have the aleph vav. Here you have the shiddich. Remember, the aleph is just a placeholder. You have the shiddich. You have the shiddich ued. And then you just have the ued. Does everybody see that? There are three different ways that you can make the e sound, the double e sound in, in, in Hebrew. This is an i, but it's also, it makes a double e, like feed or beat or, um, bite, right? I'm going home, bite. Uh, I wanna drink water. What is water in Hebrew?
Ma'im.
Ma'im, right? So you, you would see it like this. Uh-oh, that's ma'im. Ma'im, right? That's water. So i- if you saw this word, this is actually one of our site words, right, ma'im. If you saw it like that, you should automatically know that it's ma'im. And when you see the u between two consonants like that, you can automatically assume that there is a um, where is it? What keystroke is it? That there is a shiddich underneath that first m. There's always gonna be a shiddich under there, right? So the shiddich ued. The shiddich ued makes the e sound. And so you'll, you'll see this a lot in the reading for today. You'll see a lot of the shiddich ued in our reading for today.
Sneak on, right?
Yes.
Ued, what you just had there. So if you would've saw that word out, you wouldn't say, because that shirik also can sound e. So when we say like me and then walk us, you have to attach it to the ued to get that e sound.
Um, so what, what I think? Now, I may be wrong. What I think you're trying to say is, can I spell the word without the u?
No, for ma'im.
Uh-huh.
Without the ued with a shirik underneath the mem.
Right.
Right. So in pronunciation, I would have said me, because that shirik sung in e. M and I'll, yeah, write that. I thought it would be like me and then you.
Me yam.
If I was going to read phonetically, I'd have said mu, ee, you know? So, so instead of when you see that you're there, we have to automatically attach it to the ued and say the e sound.
Yes.
But it's, ah, ah, ma.
So. You might see it in different ways. You could see something like this. Right? Me yam, right? Um, you might even see a double ued like that, right? Mem. Right? Um, you, you might see it just like that and that's ma'im, right? So that goes again, i- i- it plays into your experience with what you're reading and the context.
Uh, so when the nikun, I'm gonna be seeing a letter and the nikun there give me that a sound, the same ma, mem. Ma, there'll be only nikun there saying a because it um, that's ued with that saying e.
Yeah, so, um, maybe I spelled ma'im, maybe I spelled ma'im wrong. We'll see. Let's see, one second. I'm gonna pull up a website here. And I'll see if I spelled it wrong. Cause I might have spelled it wrong. Let's see. Um. I don't know if you guys can see my screen or not, but, uh, I'm looking for.
Over the other screen.
Say it again?
You see there was none screaming the a, e, o, o. That's what we see.
Okay, so you don't see my screen then. Alright, so let, let me show you how ma'im is spelled correctly. Cause I spelled ma'im wrong. And I do that sometimes. So here, here's how ma'im is spelled. I'm gonna cut it and paste it right from the website. Look at that.
Oh, yeah.
Ma'im.
You. Let's see, let's see.
Well, it, it was wrong because I had the shiddich under the m and not under the u.
Okay.
So this would be, this would be m, a, ma. And then you have y, e, or y, i, m, ma'im, ma'im.
What's that?
Ma'im. Alright.
Raff tuda.
So, yes, ma'am.
So, if you, if we think about it, um, there are a lot of words that have that ding, allah pur, kasta ding, kalmi ding, or ring. They all end in that u, mem, sofi.
Yes.
If, if, um, if we look at it like that, like a lot of times I look at how words end. Uh, if I'm struggling trying to read it, it ends with a o or e or a, like kalmi da. So, yeah, that e is, is real popular.
Yeah, you, you're gonna see plenty of words with the e on it, okay? So, e, e, once you get familiar with what the e is, is doing, what it's trying to, the information it's trying to give you, it's gonna be a lot easier to, to recognize it. Um, and you won't get confused. Alright, I promise you. But yeah, so you'll see like the shiddich ued like this, or you'll see just the u by itself. Alright, now here under the f. Here under the s sound, or we could say the e sound, right? Let me, let me change this back to the i so that we know what it is. Here we have the e sound. You have, I'm gonna start here. This one here is called stedet. Stedet. Alright, it's called stedet. Alright. And there, there's not gonna be a quiz on these guys. We're not, I, I'm not here to quiz you on the nikun. Alright, I just wanna make sure we know what these are called. Alright. This here with the three dots that are in triangle shape, this is called the segol. And sometimes you can put the accent in a different place and it'd be segol, but who cares, right? Segol, segol. Who cares, what, how you say it? Sometimes you'll see the segol with the ued in front of it. And it still makes the s sound. Don't let that nikun, don't let that those two extra dots, don't let them fool you. Don't let them trip you up. It still makes the s sound. Same thing over here with the i sound. These last two i sounds, don't let Same thing over here with the I sound. These last two I sounds, don't let them confuse you. They're still I, alright? And then you have underneath the last column, the last row of the S sound. You have uh, the shiva, and this is how I spell shiva. You can, you might spell it differently, you might have might put a W now, who cares, but it's the shiva. Alright, um, in the first column here, we have the I sounds. And the only thing that's important is to know, the first one looks like a little uh, a T. That is called the kamaz. And the other one is called the patak. Okay, kamaz is the little T looking thing here. And the patak is underneath, right here, there's a straight line. And they both make the I sound. Now, at some point. In the history of the Nicu, perhaps the kamaz and the patak made a different sound. Uh, if you look at some Hebrew learning software, some Hebrew learning books. They're gonna say that the kamaz is a long A sound, and the patak is a short A sound. They're really indistinguishable. Okay, it doesn't really make any sense to us, cuz they're indistinguishable, especially me, I'm from Texas. And I'm a slur anyway, so it doesn't really make any difference how you say it. Because they all kinda say the same thing. Kamaz and patak sound alike. What I want to do is. I know this is a lot of information. What I want to do is, we're going to go through these together. Um, you can mute your phone if you, if you, or your, your computer, if you, if you like to. But what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go down the row. You guys can kinda see my cursor. I'm gonna go down each, each row, and we're gonna say the sound each of these Nicu makes. And then on the next thing, we're going to, I'm gonna call your name. And we're gonna try to see if you guys can guess the sound, okay? So if you are, for instance, if you're on your computer. I want you to grab your cellphone and take a screenshot of the vowel recognition chart real quick. I'll give you thirty seconds. Take a picture of the vowel recognition chart. What we're gonna do on the next screen, we're going to go over some of these sounds. And so we can get a little practice, set uh, decoding these sounds. Any questions before we get started?
Yeah, will we be getting this as well, uh, Maury?
This is gonna be part of the worksheet that I'm sending out to everybody.
Okay, I wasn't able to access session two's worksheet.
Okay, um, that's just a, that's a, a logistics thing. I will get it to you um, as best I can, once class over with. I, I'll be troubleshooting that the rest of the night, just if you don't, if anybody on the call doesn't have access to both worksheets. Lesson one and lesson two, let me know, and we can work on that, you know, once the class is over with. Cuz I'm sure um, some of y'all have Yahoo and Google and Yahoo are encompassing each other, so. Is there any number of reasons why you don't have it? But I did send it out, just let me know if you don't have it. Alright, so let's start from column one, the I column. Kamaz makes I. Everybody try to put that in your head. I'm gonna tell you how I did it, before we get started. I'm gonna tell you how I did it. I just looked at four of these, right? Like the kamaz, the setting. The shiddic for some reason was very easy, and the kaboots seem very distinguishable. And I memorized what those four Nicu made, what sound they made. So just try to familiarize yourself with a few of the Nicu. And from there, you might, you know, try the easy ones. There, there's only, there's only two that have a straight line, and they both make the I sound, you know what I'm saying? There's only one that is, that's one below the, the letter, and it makes the E sound. So those were very easy to kinda distinguish. So you gotta find whatever kind of trick you need to make it. Um, go get you a, a deck of cards and randomly hole punch. The different holes in the cards, and then go through it like that, you know? Find yourself some kind of trick to memorize the Nicu, so that you can put them to memory. Cuz that's gonna make it a whole lot easier to read Hebrew once you can do it. Let's go through it. Now watch this. We have A. Let me write it right here, for this one here. You have A. Eh. Eh, and then you have like the really short eh. Okay? And the eh column, the setting, the setting makes this sound like. A, or you might see it like A like that. It has a very different kind of E sound than everything else. A, or A, as in the word they. Or the word they. Setting has a sound like that, A, as in they or they. So it's a, it's a fuller E sound than the eh, as in eh. Segal makes the sound as an egg, or leh. It makes a short A sound, the short E sound. Now, for the shiva. The shiva here, let me highlight a different color. Let's go with red. The shiva is going to be like a superscript E. How do you make a superscript E? It's gonna be a different kind of E. And you'll see it sometimes li- as a lower, you'll see it sometimes like that, right? It makes like a little small E. And the reason why it's there is because. You might have a hard time transitioning from one letter to the eh, to the next. And so you can throw a little E sound in there to get to. The next set of uh, the, the next set of Nicu and letter combinations. I'll give you a good example real quick. We have the word sma. Right? Sma. Now, sometimes they'll throw a little E in there, because we have a hard time saying S H M. And so when you have the shiva, you can throw the little E in there to make it sma. When in fact, there is no E in it for real. And that word is spelled like this. Shin, mim, ayin. And so this is sma. And you'll see the. Does everybody see my screen? Am I making sense?
Okay.
Sma. So. It's very hard for some people to transition from that S H sound. To the M sound, schwum, schwum. So they have allowed, they being the people who modernized the Hebrew language for them Israelis. They, they allowed for this small little superscript E. To be put in there, so that they could get from the S H sound to the M sound. Sma, sma, sma. So we have uh, my spiritual mother, Atara Shemaiah. And we'll say Shemaiah, but her real, the pronunciation of her name is really Shmaiah. Atara Shmaiah. But because we can't say that schmuck sound, they throw that E in there. So if you ever see somebody saying the shiva makes the E sound, it doesn't really, but you can, you can get away with it if you have to. So we have eh. Eh, eh, and then this really doesn't make a sound, but we can just say eh. For, for all intents and purposes. Then we have E, E, E. Ooh, and ooh. Ooh and ooh. Questions before we move on? This was a very important slide here, so make sure you have a good understanding of it. Because you're gonna need this information to continue on in today's lesson. Any questions? No, there are no dumb questions. Alright, I'm gonna push forward to drill and practice. Um, I'm going to call some names. If you are not one of those kinds of students, then um. Just let me know, okay? Um. Deborah, code Deborah. Can you tell us what I have highlighted?
Ba.
Ba, correct. So what we have here, we have. The B and this little dot, this little dot inside the B. I wanna make this smaller. This is too un-boded. Let's make it smaller, so it gets a little right in there. Alright, so what we have in here, we have the, this letter is the B, this dot. This dot is called a dagesh. Dagesh. Let me catch this uh, line over. It's like, it's called a dagesh. And this dagesh lets us know that this letter is the B sound of this letter. And not the V sound, cuz sometimes it makes a V, right? Um, so, so we have the B. And then the patak makes the I sound, ba. So we have ba. Alright, who's next on the, who's, who's next? Anybody wanna volunteer? Did I call Israel? Oh, no, if I wanna call Israel. Go ahead, Israel, what you got?
Uh, what, what are you asking about?
Wings. You care to explain how it's lean?
Uh, because of the vav, the vav, that's one of the sounds that it makes is the E sound. So, Lee.
Alright, so what we have here, the lamid makes the L sound. And I wanna make sure this is. Small enough for us to see everything. The uh, the lamid makes the L sound. Underneath the lamid, we have the shiddic. And it's accompanied by the U, so this is called the shiddic yud. And the shiddic yud makes the E sound, so this is actually lean.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see that shirik.
That's okay, that's okay. Um. Let's, let's zoom in a little bit more then. Alright, who's next? Who wants to try the next one?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
That's uh, K.
Say that one more time?
K.
K. Why, why is it K? Can you explain it?
So you have uh, calf.
Calf makes a K.
And then you have the. Uh.
That's okay. Like I said, the name isn't important. It's called a setting, right? And the setting makes a A Y sound. Hey, there you go. K. Alright, somebody wanna try the next one?
Attra.
Okay.
Which one now?
Dead. The reason why that's dead is because the letter is dalit. And the little shiva underneath it makes the E sound, or the eh sound. And the way that I will always uh, show the shiva. If I'm transliterating Hebrew myself, if I am translating, literally reading it, I will put a. I'll put an apostrophe for the shiva. You will always see me transliterate the shiva with an apostrophe. Say again? Alright, let me see, I'm gonna, I'm gonna zoom out a little bit, because I want to. Fix this while I'm here. Let's, let's highlight this. And we're gonna put all of this at twenty-four. And we're gonna unbold it all, alright? And I'm gonna do the same thing for this row. We're gonna put it at twenty-four unbold. There we go, alright. What's next? Anybody wanna take the next one? What about this one?
Co.
Co, that's right, so. Here we have calf, and I always make calf with a K. Here we have the cough, and sometimes you'll see cough like that. Um, but. When you're, you're cough or cough, however you wanna call it, um. Be- because we're American or English speakers, um, I don't want us to confuse that with the Q sound. So I always make it a K as well, alright? Because otherwise, you'll be trying to make the quack sound, though, and it's not, it's not a Q sound, it is a K sound, right? Cough makes a K sound, so we have co. The next one here, I have the noon and the kaboots. And the kaboots makes what sound?
Ooh.
Ooh sound, correct.
Cool.
Cool, uh, uh, co and noon, yes.
New.
Alright, so middle column, top row, middle column. We have ga. The gimel makes the G sound, and the kamaz makes the A sound. Uh, what's next?
Oh, 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 oh.
The iron is what?
Silent, silent.
Iron is silent, and what is the thing, the little dot card above the iron? Yes, so that, that word is a guttural.
Holam.
Holam, yes, ma'am, holam. And it makes, it makes an O sound, so this would be just an O. Right, and I would maybe do it like that, to let you know. Notice that all of my consonants are capital, except for ba. All of my consonants are capital, and all of my uh, Nicu are lowercase. Alright, what's next? Third, third row, middle column. And the way that that is represented in, in transliteration, I represent it like that. That lets me know it's a sound, okay? There you go, like, like you're coughing. There you go. Remember, don't let that double Nicu at the bottom trip you up. It still makes the I sound. Okay? Uh, what's next? Fourth one.
Ah.
Ah.
You're right, ah. Doesn't matter that it has an olive there, that olive is silent, it takes on the vowel of. It takes on the vowel of the sound of the vowel that's with it, so it makes the R sound. Alright, what's, what's next? Yeah, this, so this is ooh, right? Cuz the uh this is not a vowel, this is a kaboot and this is a shuduk. It's not a vowel, it's a shuduk. This will appear sometimes in the middle of a word. It can appear at the end of a word, it can appear at the beginning of a word. Okay? But this is a ooh sound. Now, if it appears at the beginning of a word, each, each of those things means something different, I want you to know. At the beginning of a word, the shuduk means and, A and D, right? At the beginning of a word, it means and, alright? At the end of a word, it is us or we, right? Anachnu. Uh, Eloheinu, our Elohim, right? Eloheinu.
Slicka, at the end of a word, it means what? Sorry?
At the end of a word, the shuduk means or, or us or we. Uh, and I, and I have another chart here that I can show you where you can see that. I'll bring it later, I'll, I'll, I'll share it to the group. Uh, where you can see like what the endings mean. Noon is an ending, let me show you, look up here. Everybody's looking at my screen. So we have nu, right? I mean, they are futsu. We have su again, right? Those endings are shuduk. They mean something. It means our, right? And then also the ha means something at the end, right? This, this is all part of decoding. You understand how that is? Here's the vowel, the beginning, so we have the word right here, three-letter root. And then we have this vowel at the beginning of a word is a prenominal prefix, I'm sorry, pronominal prefix. And then the shuduk at the end of the word is a pronominal suffix. So you have three things going on. You have the root word, you have the prefix, and then you have the suffix. And they, each of the prefix and the suffix both change the state. S T A T E, change the state of the word, okay? And again, you have it here. Here's another suffix. Here's another suffix. Here's another prefix. Right? Here's another suffix. So these are, these are pronominal prefixes, pronominal suffixes, and they change the state of the root word. Uh, so that, that is, that's an English term. Let me, let me write it down for you. She likes to see it. It's, it's just an English term.
I like that will represent some pronoun, is it?
Ask you a question again?
What the prefixes and the suffixes represent a pronoun, me, my, ours.
Yes, yeah.
All the affixes.
Yes, ma'am. Not the prefixes, uh, but the suffixes will.
Yeah, so both the prefixes and the suffixes represent a pronoun and tells you the person.
Ma- ma- mainly the suffixes. The, the, the pronominal prefixes can, can, can tell you present tense, past tense, or future tense. Right? Because i- if it's a, if it's a noon in the pre- in the pre- in the beginning, the noon prefix means present tense, uh, I'm sorry, means future tense. The, the, the mem represents the past tense, right? Uh, the, the taav represents, I wanna say a direct object or indirect object. Is this, it goes, it may gets, it gets, you know, a lot more. I mean, how many people on this call literally can tell me what a direct object or indirect object is in English? You know what I'm saying? So why, why would I, why would I try to explain that in Hebrew when a lot of us, you know, I'm an English teacher and when they tell me that I'll be teaching uh that kinda stuff, I'm like, uh, is there like a, a teacher or something? Cuz I had no idea what none of that stuff meant. They get modifiers and past partisimples, indefinite, indefinite articles. I mean, who really knows what all that stuff is in English? And we wanna try to, you know, dissect those in Hebrew. I mean, it just doesn't really make any sense. Um, let, let's push forward a little bit. I wanna go a little faster. We have taav, um, so we have tet makes the T sound and we have kamats makes the R sound. Over here, I didn't do this one yet. Let me uh make these, what was it, twenty four and no bold. Alright. Over here, we have the shin. Right? And we know it's shin because the dot at the top here is on the right shoulder and not the left shoulder. If it was on the left shoulder, it would be seen, so you know, this is Say again?
Can we bring it down? I can't see it.
Bring it down like this?
Thank you.
Alright. Alright, so we have we have sheh. Don't let the double niku here trip you up. That segol is what's important. So it means eh and not something else, okay? Just leave it as eh. It doesn't they, they, you can hardly distinguish between this and the regular segol a- anymore, so don't worry about it, alright? We have zayin makes the Z sound and then you have the regular segol, which makes the S sound. Now here we have semet makes the S sound and what is this one gonna be? See, yes, see. Because that U is gonna make the E sound. That U is gonna make the E sound. Alright, what's, what's, what's this one gonna be? It's actually, race is actually spelled with the setting in it. That's why we say race and not resh. It is not resh, it is race. And it actually has, it actually has a setting in it. And for, for this one here, seti is uh I don't wanna say the only vowel, but seti, when we represent setting, we always put the A Y. Alright, because we don't wanna confuse it with the patak or the kamats. You can put an A Y or you can put an E Y. Ray. Okay? But you, remember, you always put the Y with it because you don't wanna confuse it with the kamats. Alright, then we have the sadi. Sadi is a very interesting. Sorry guys, this is my uh one year. Sadi is very interesting because it is a TS sound, right? Not a Z sound. It's like a soft Z, not like a TS. Everybody's kinda saying And it makes a, like in the word Zion. Zion is not a, is not, is not a strong Z like in zayin. Zayin makes a strong Z like zebra, zayin. But the sadi makes a very soft Z sound, sadi. And sadi is actually spelled like this, TSA sadi. And then the last but not least, we have the taav, not the tet, but the taav and the taav is with the shiddic and it is gonna be teed. And I put these together like this so you can see that the taav and the tet basically make the same sound. Look at this, the kof, the calf and the hats and the heads make the same sound almost, you know? The, the sheen, the zeh, the sheen, the zayin, the semic and the sadi kinda make the same sound, all with the S, you know, depending on how you say it. So don't let those similarities trip you up, okay? You gotta just do, do your part to recognize the difference nuances in the sound and the pronunciations. Questions? Any questions? Girl, you uh, you look bewildered over there. Are you okay?
I'm okay.
You sure?
Yes, okay.
Alright.
Wait, the, can you say the last one again?
Right here?
Yes.
This is taav and there is a shiddic underneath the taav and the shiddic makes the E sound. So this is gonna be T. You might even be like, be better write like that, T.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, ba, lee, kay, deh, co, nu. Now, once you can get these sounds under your tongue, once you can get these sounds down and you, you're, you're comfortable with these sounds, you're actually reading Hebrew. Alright, you're reading Hebrew. You are decoding Hebrew. And anything you read is going to be a mixture of those different nikus and vowels and, and letters, nikus and, and letters, alright? Alright, so let's uh let, let's, let's take a break for a second, guys. If you need to get some water, you need to stretch your legs. Reach, stand up and reach for the ceiling, get the blood flowing different, different way, alright? We wanna review some, we're gonna review some rules really quickly for the class. And then we're gonna go into some, some words that uh, Atra, I mean, that Sarah gave us. One second.
Okay. Okay. So, so? Is it? Oh, I don't know how that is. Is that?
Yeah, there you go. Shosh. So review, uh, review the rules and class norms. Now I told you, all of my rules can be bent. Most of my rules can be broken, but we, 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 we established these rules to give you guys a foundation so that we can start learning how to read Hebrew. Whenever you see a vowel between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So here's the vowel and it's between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. So this word would be Rule number two. The kamats, which is this T-looking thing under here, the kamats makes the R sound as in father. So we have the D and the R and the G. Very interesting, um, dog means fish. And uh, during the Babylonian captivity, um the uh, Hebrews were in Babylon. Daniel especially, never can, never, he worshipped a god named Daggon, the fish head deity, Daggon. Alright, so then we have Daggon and we have a, it would have a little hold on right there, da-gon, Daggon. It was a, the fish head god. And it's the same kinda hat the pope wears nowadays. But it's the fish head deity, Daggon. So the kamats always makes the R sound. Rule number three. The shiva appears. Lord have mercy. Give me one more second, guys, sorry. Rule number three. When shiva appears under the first letter of a word, it is indicating a short sound or blend. And that was what we were looking at uh with the word shmaia, right? Shmaia, where the shiva was telling us to blend the sheen with the mem for that schwum sound. That is hard to say in a, in, in for some people in different languages schwum. It says here, when the shiva appears under the second letter of a word, it is indicating a syllabic break. And we're gonna talk about this right now, so don't worry about trying to memorize it, but we're gonna look at this in the reading as we're reading.
You're so fast.
I'm going fast?
I was writing down, sorry.
Okay, no, no, I'm sorry. Let, let me know. Let me know. We're, we're really reviewing these rules from last class and that's why I'm just going through them quickly cuz it was something I gave last class. That's why I slowed, I slowed down, I don't, I'm here for you.
My first time, so I, I didn't get anything before.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. I'm sorry. I- i- if I'm going too fast, you just, you just tell me to pump the brakes.
Thank you. Are you sending this out?
I, this is, this is the worksheet, yes, ma'am.
Part of it, okay, perfect.
Be in the email as well.
Yes, okay, you're gonna get it.
Yeah, but i- 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 if it helps you to write it down, if that's how you learn, that's how I learn. I hate, I hate graphics and digital stuff. I like stuff on paper. So if it helps you to write it down, then write it down. And I'm gonna show you some examples of the shiva, okay? Uh, before we leave class, we've got plenty of time to, to go through some examples in the reading. And you'll see all these rules, um, you'll see all these rules in action and you'll see you'll see why I established these rules and why these rules help um, Hebrew language learners read Hebrew, okay? I'm gonna move on a little bit. We have a few more things. I think it's two things more, right? Okay, so rule for the shuduk, rule for the shuduk. Now, don't, never mind this cuz this thing is not giving me the shuduk the right way. There we go. Rule for the shuduk. And remember, the shuduk has a little dot. It's, it's the dot and the, and the letter is a shuduk. Whenever shuduk he is having a hard time right now. Whenever shuduk appears at the beginning of a word, it always means and. And I showed, I showed you this, I think. No, we, we're gonna see it today. Um, in the divine salutate, in, in the raising of the ark that we did in beginning class, we had the vav, which means and, and you'll see that next, right here. But for now, the shuduk, whenever the shuduk appears at the beginning of a word, it always means and. Remember, I told you, you can see the shuduk at the beginning of a word and it means this, then you see it in the middle of a word. Then you see it in the middle of a word, and then you can see it at the end of a word, and it means something else. So whenever the Shiddic appears at the beginning of a word, it means and. Whenever it appears at the end of a word, it means we, or us, or our. Like Eloheinu, our Elohim, Anachnu, we, right? Alright, and here's the last one, whenever the Shiva. And the Shiva has this little, um, thing underneath it, when, whenever the Shiva. Appears at the beginning of a word, it also means and. And that is from the Raising of the Ark, we saw, ve, uh. And let your enemies, and let them be scattered, your enemies, right? Ve'afusu, let them be scattered. I'm gonna uh, scroll down here, I wanna get to this here, where we are going to work on this, alright? Um, vocabulary in review, let's look at this. Somebody, um, what I would like to do is. I would like for you all to give each other some time to struggle with these words, okay? Before you call out the answer, some of y'all are star students, some of y'all are like me, and you struggle, okay? So, give everybody some time to struggle with these letters and these pronunciations. Before you uh, give the answer out too quickly, okay? I'm gonna do the first one for you. What you see is two columns, the first column, one from left to right. The left column is the word in English, and the right, the other column is the word in Hebrew. We have, here we have Ka, Za, Ra. Kazara. Kazara. Now, how do you have Kazara? The Hets makes the sound. The Pata makes the R sound, then you have the Zain. And then you have the kmatz, you have the Resh and the kmatz, and you have the Ha'athi. So you have Kazara. Kazara, everybody saying Kazara. Does anybody not see how that is Kazara? Kazara. Now, the, the, the second word that you see here. Was a word that we did not know what it meant, me and Israel. And we had to ask Sarah what it meant, and this is a type of pronoun. This, that, those, these, et cetera, alright? This, that, those, these, and anything like that, those, that is no wrong, anything like that, those types of. Um, non, they, they call them determiner pronouns, but they're non-gender. Uh, and they're not formal pronouns, they're just determiner pronouns, alright? And that group of pronouns is called Kanui Remes, Kanui Remes, okay? Kanui is pronoun, Remes is a type of pronoun, it's called a determiner, Kanui Remes. Resh segal is red, Mim segal is meh. And then the, the Zain makes the Z sound, Red Mes, Red Mes. Red Mes. Somebody, somebody tell me the, the third one here.
Wait, some.
So, so, everybody, everybody is recognizing that first word, letter, right, the Sheen. But what is the, what is the name of the Nikud under the Sheen? And, and what was it about the Seti that made it different from the other E vowels?
It makes a kind of a A sound.
It makes kind of an A sound, right? So, shame. Yeah, yeah, everybody see that, shame. Shame, right? Shalame, right, it is a more of an A sound than an S sound, this is the name. So, when you, when, when you, when your Hebrew friends are talking to you, and they're saying Shim. His name wasn't Shim, his name was Shame, okay, the name, Hasham. A- a- and let them, let them argue with you, maybe we're not saying it right. But if we're decoding it based on the information that we're given, it's shame, okay? Shame. Now, um, I be, I, I believe somebody in the beginning of class was talking about. The, the Mims, right, the, the Ee, and how the Ee was a plural, right? This is another, what's it, what, what you would call a pronominal suffix, right? These are suffixes that you put onto the root word. That changes the state of the root word, right? So. Don't let all these dots and things fool you, take it one letter at a time. Alright, so let's look at the first letter. We have the bait.
Bait, bait.
Yes, we know it's the bait because it has the dagesh in the middle, right? And then we have the Shiddic underneath. So, the Shiddic makes the E sound, and this dagesh lets us know this is bait, not vape. So we have B. Now. What might throw you off is, why is there a dagesh within this tet? There are certain letters in Hebrew that. When you see the dagesh in them. The dagesh means you are to say the letter twice. We have some of these words in English too. I know. It, it, it can be kinda overwhelming, right? Well, look at this, we have the word. Alright, and you have two Ms in the word Summit. So, if I were to transliterate this word here, I would, I would transliterate like this, let me show you. Bait, and then we have the Shiddic. And then we have the tet, but guess what? That dagesh in the tet means two Ts. Then we have. We have the Shiddic, right? And the Shiddic makes the U sound. And then we have. The Ude. Now notice that this Ude is not the Shiddic U, but there is a Shiddic U. Here we have a Shiddic U right here, Shiddic U, and here we have a Shiddic U. But that Shiddic U is what, it is a Shiddic, so we gotta, we gotta write the Shiddic first, which is Y. And then we write the Shiddic U, which is the E, and then we write the Mim Sophie. So, this word is beat two yin. Beat two yin, so make sure you pronounce that T twice, you gotta pronounce the T twice. Beat two yin.
Be two yin.
Beat two yin.
Be two yin.
And then we have, what is this here word, somebody, somebody bring it down. There you go, we have Ka. Zay. Team, Kazakeen. Kazak, I got a friend named Kazak, and he is like six four, three hundred and fifty pounds, and he's solid muscle. And he was a, he was at the weight room one day, he's like, you wanna come to the weight room with me? And I said, okay, and then I got on his Facebook page, and I saw he had eight forty-five pound plates on this side. And eight forty-five plates on this side, I said, look, I'm sick, I can't go with you to the gym. I got five kids to raise, and I'm not gonna have them killing me, alright? So, Kazak means strong. And my friend Kazak is strong, okay? So, we have beat two yin, Kazakeen. Expressions that are strong, right, or strong expressions, beat two yin, Kazakeen. Beat two yin, Kazakeen. Now, when I say Kazakeen, you can't really hear if it's Zay or Zeh. It doesn't really matter, right? Beat two yin, Kazakeen, beat two yin, Kazakeen. When you're speaking Hebrew, nobody's gonna say, hey, you didn't pronounce that Zeddy, you pronounced the Segal, no matter, gonna stop you. As long as it makes sense, Hebrew is one of those languages or contexts. As long as the context is sound, people can really understand what you're saying, okay? As long as your context is sound, people will generally understand what you're saying. Alright. So here, I'm looking at this one now. Here we have. Bait, we know it's bait because it has a dagesh in it, right? We have bait, and we have Shiddic makes the B sound, so we have B. But look, we, we have the Vapes now, see how the first Vet has the dagesh in it? And the second one does not, so here we have both instances of bait. We have the bait first, and we have the Vapes. Now, I'm gonna scroll back up really quickly. To. Right here, whenever the Shiva appears under the second letter of a word. It is indicating a syllabic break in the word, alright? So here, we have the Shiva appears under the second letter in the word. So I break the syllable right there, instead of breaking it right there. Whenever the Shiva appears under the second letter, is indicating a syllabic break. So you gotta stop, and you gotta take a breath before you say the rest of it, right? We have Beer. Beer, Ra Ha. Now, this here, yes.
The Nikud under the first bit.
I'm sorry, we're breaking up, say that again?
The Nikud under the first bit, how is it pronounced?
This is Shiddic.
She, E. Okay, so it's B.
Yes, Beer. I'm, 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 I'm gonna write it here, under this, I'm gonna erase this blessings, and I'm gonna write it right here, right? So we have Bates, I'm writing it right here, we have Bates. And then we have the Shick makes the I, but we have to conclude at R because of the Shiva. And then I'll put the Shiva right here, boom, Beer. Yeah, remember, remember I told you, sometimes I will put the Shiva as an apostrophe. So we have Beer. I'm sorry. No, you, you, you got me, you're right, I'm sorry. I, 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 you know, I do this all day long, so it's like, by the end of the day, I'm, my brain is jealous, right? It's Beeve. I, I do this all day long, so my brain, by the end of the night, my brain is jealous, right? But, but you're right, cause it's, it's, it's Bates, and then it's Vapes, Beeve. Beev Ra Ha. And you can, you can see that all of my vowels are lowercase, and all of my consonants are capitalized. Beev Ra Ha, and Baruch would be right here, the, the Vapes. The Resh and the Ka will be Baruch. So, you have the root word, which is the Bates, Resh, Ka, Sophie. Would be the root, which is Baruch, or Barach, meaning blessings, right? Beev Ra Ha, keep, keep me honest, y'all, cause sometimes, I say, I, I, I know the answers, and so sometimes I mess myself up. And it means blessings, and Israel was, um. Uh, was, was pointing out to us that, um, she asked, she asked, uh, Sarah. When do you say Beev Ra Ha? And you can say Beev Ra Ha at the blessing of a mill, or you get a certificate or an award, you could say Beev Ra Ha. Uh, and it's something that we use in the kingdom more than you might hear those Israelis using in Israel. They use some other kinda word, um, but uh, it is Beev Ra Ha, not Beer, Beev Ra Ha. But let's say we were talking about, um, let's say we were talking about the city of Beer Shiva, right? We would say Beer, and then you would have the Shiva. It's getting, it's getting really muddy now, but you, you, you understand what I'm trying, what I'm trying to do. Beer Shiva would be, uh, it would be an R right here, Beer Shiva, right? Beer, and you have the Shiva breaking it up, then Shiva, Beer Shiva, alright? Alright, so now we're going to the next one here. We have, somebody, if you, if you think you know it. We have. Yeah, you're right, now look at this, I told you, there are some letters that get a dagesh. The dagesh is the one that's inside the mouth of the. And it just means that you're gonna double that L sound, okay? So it's gonna look, if I were to write this word out in he, in English, looking here on the new words. I would do like this, Mim. Shiddic. Lamit, Mil. Lim, see I has two Ls? Mil, uh-oh, Lim. Milim. Look at that, it kinda goes back and forth, Milim. Milim, you gotta say it, you gotta say that L, even though the syllable break is right here. You kinda have to say that L on both sides of the syllable break, alright? A- and, and there's only like, there's only like ten letters that you can do that with in Hebrew. The same way, there's only a few letters you do that with in English, alright? Uh, only certain words can do that, um, that's called the Dagesh Linay, or the Dagesh Fort. Or the dagesh forte, one of them, one of them things, I don't know. It's, it's, it's a dagesh. And it's, uh, it means you're gonna double the sound of the letter on both sides of the syllable. So only certain letters do that. Mil lean, mil lean. And then we have. This is Shin. We know it's Shin because that dot is on the right shoulder, not the left shoulder. And then we have the holam vav right there makes the O sound. So milim kada shox. Kada shox means noon. Kadash means noon, but because words milim is plural, kada shox. Kadash needs to be plural also. So you have words that are plural. Alright? Expressions that are strong. Words that are plural. That's how I say it. You can say plural words, strong expressions. But I don't like to try to switch those adjectives and nouns. So I just say words that are plural. Expressions that are strong. Means the same thing. Alright. This is one that maybe, um, you often take to memory. Somebody give me this one. Rock rega. Miss Gail, do you see how that's rock rega? Can you explain it to me?
Rock is just.
I'm saying, can, can you explain to me the letters? So tell me what you see.
Oh, beside it. Uh, the reish with the, with the line under it. The line makes the, uh, A sound.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, the I sound.
The, the letter A, yeah, the I sound. I got you.
Okay, and then the kuf, so that makes that rock.
Rock, yes, ma'am.
And then you have the three dots, which make the U sound. The, the three dots that go in the, uh, diagonals, the U slick eye. The S sound.
The S is an egg, yes, ma'am.
So red, and then god, rega.
Rega, yes, ma'am. And this, uh, this ion right here is silent. But the ion has to be there because when you conjugate rega into its root form. Is a three-letter root and that, that olive is, that ion is there for the root. And if you were to conjugate rega into something else. Outside of its construct state, you might have to use that ion to pick up another sound. So that's why the ion is there, is part of the root of the word rega. Rock rega means just a moment, like, get, hold on, give me a break. Give me a moment. Let me finish writing. Rock rega. Y'all are reading Hebrew. If you're, if you're keeping up with the class right now, you guys are reading Hebrew. And, 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 and your task, your mission, should you choose to accept it, is to just. Practice reading Hebrew and just get better and better at reading it faster and faster. Even I struggle with reading Hebrew. You give me something fresh, I'm gonna struggle with it. I'm gonna have to sit there and sound it out. But once you start doing it, the more you do it, the easier it should come to you. The more you do it, the easier it should get. Uh, what is this last one here? Means also. And the way she had it in the, uh, was like this. Uh-oh, why does it do that to me? She had it like this. Vegam, which is and also. Remember, whenever, that goes to my rule, right? The rule right here, which says. Vav with the shiva will also mean and when it appears at the beginning of a word. So we have. And also, vegam, and also. And there's, there's a couple more here. We can go through if you like. Uh, we got about fifteen minutes left of class. Remember that the ion is, is silent. So we're gonna skip the ion and we're gonna go to the holam vav. Which is old. And then right here, whenever the vav, whenever the shiva appears under the second letter of a word, it's a syllabic break. That's one of our rules. So we have old. Yes. Harbe means many.
Or a lot.
Or a lot, yes. Whenever you see that shiva right there, man, you just, you know that it's talking about a syllabic break. You can just draw a line right there. Alright. Here we have. I, I, I want to make sure that you guys understand that when you see this niku. You are ignoring the shiva in this niku. One of our rules is whenever you see the shiva under the first letter of a word. But this niku is not the shiva. This is called something else. It is not a shiva. It is called a patak, a hatif, a top, patak a top. Alright, and so it is not a shiva. So this is, does not, this does not conform to rule number one of the shiva. It is this only koo. I would say amuna. Um, now I know, uh, some of us, we're country, so we might say E or imuna, emuna. But if we're decoding it true to the context, it would be amuna. Right? Um, i- i- if it, if it, if it is pronounced differently, then I will defer to whatever Sarah says, of course. But as far as niku goes, um, I, I would say amuna. Alright, which means praise. Amuna. Then we have. Now, now, just look at this here. Again, we have, we have that dagon dagesh. And it's inside that D. And it, it's not telling us to make a double D. It's not changing the, the sound of the D like it does with the Bates and the vates or the pay and the fey. It's not telling us U as in shuruk, like this shuruk right here. I mean, this dagesh is very versatile and it means a lot of different things. Depending on where and how it's used. So for the D here. We're just going to ignore the dagesh. Alright, we're just going to ignore it because it, what it does, what it does. Is not very distinguishable anymore in Hebrew. And, and, and that's unfortunate, but it is, it's just, is, you can't really distinguish the sound it makes. Anymore because it was added in there to support a bunch of different European languages. That were trying to learn Hebrew in the forties and fifties and sixties. And once everybody learned Hebrew, the language evolved to a point where it no longer. Holds its meaning anymore. It's no longer any value. There's no value to it. And, and this is, this is something I tell Hebrews all the time. They wanna talk about Hebrew and. And oh, it has Latin letters and Latin words and, and this. Okay, well, look. If we could somehow learn the language that King David spoke in the days of King David. If we could speak the same Hebrew as him. Within ten years, it would be a totally different language anyway, because the language is constantly evolving. And there are certain things that we say that he would, would have no context for, like airplane or telephone or newspaper. You know what I'm saying? So the language is constantly changing. And so a lot of these changes. Don't. Progress. They don't stay with the language. So this dagesh and the D, it just doesn't. Translate anymore because there's no difference. Whether you wanna say it's the duh or like the thur or something, it doesn't, doesn't make any sense anymore. So we ignore it. So I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna shrink this down a little bit right here. Um, because I need to, um. We got like ten, we got like eight minutes left, guys and gals. I'm gonna shrink this down so that we can look at this last. We can look at this last. Everybody can see my screen, I hope. Alright, so let's, let's transliterate this last little piece here. We have the dot. And then we have a little superscript E. Remember that little superscript E we talked about? And I'm, I'm gonna put that reish right there so that I can keep the formatting. I'm gonna shrink that E down. Alright? That's how, that's how we're gonna look at that. That's how the E is gonna look. And then we know this here is Shin. Well, before the Shin, we see here that we have a shitty yun. Right? Then we have Shin, and we know it's Shin because the dot is over the right shoulder, not the left shoulder. Daddy, then we have tuck, makes the I sound. And then we have the tongue makes the T sound. Try and merge that D and that reish together as best you can. Three shots. Might have to roll your tongue a little bit. The dishat. And, and maybe that's what that, the guess means. They want you to. Roll your tongue or makes you, uh, who knows, right? Dirty shots. Dirty shots. What is the long, what's the next word? Oh, somebody's reading Hebrew over there. Yeah, and so that, that Lee is gonna be like led because. You will put, i- i- that is the prenominal prefix for or to. Give my regards to, right? Le Israel, le Isria, le Dimona. To your family, to anybody, right? Give my regards to the family. Look at how the transliteration looks compared to the actual Hebrew. And then think about how much meaning you'll miss if you take it like some Hebrews say. In all the letters and having A vowel behind them only. Alright, so your homework. You guys have homework. So you guys will see the rest of this worksheet, right? Starting at pronunciation practice. These are just some words that you guys can work on sight words, okay? They're very good sight words for you, you practice with, right? Look at this. Look at this here. Whenever the vav appears under the second word, or under the second letter. Or not the second letter, right? This means a syllable break. So we have. Coach vim right there. Look at this. We have another one right here. You guys can really break it down really easily. Mode, right, little mode, right? So you guys, uh, you guys should be able to, um, you should be able to sound these words out. And practice. Okay? Practice sounding these words out. Let me zoom out a little bit. Oh, that's too much. Let's keep it one page. Yeah, so you can practice pronunciation practice. Uh, if you wanna break these down, right? So here, when you wouldn't break down, right? To, yeah. Here you have that little small E. Make sure you break that down correctly, right? To da. And that's that, there's, there's, there's another one of those dagesh that don't really mean anything anymore. It doesn't mean anything. I, I mean, you could, you could, if you wanna look it up, there's like a. I can put a video up there that you can see what they mean, but it, it doesn't really. Why, why let it feel real estate in your brain where you're not really gonna see it or use it? You know what I'm saying? And these are, all, all of these words come from the stuff that Atara gave us. Shalom, talmeen, ta-talmeen, right? Tal need, hallelujah. Shalom talmeen, hallelujah. Ani lomedes. Alright, you gotta just, you gotta read it. You gotta keep practicing reading it until you get it smooth, you know, you, you, nobody's. You are your own, uh, grader on this. You gotta just get on it and read it. The ga, the gum. Be, be, beat, to win, begum, begum between. And that's how you read it. Look at this here, Ishaa. See how that sheen has that dagesh in? Is that dot in, in between it? So it's gonna be ish. Sha, you gotta say that sheen twice. Ish sha. There is, there is, there is shots. Shalom Lee. Hallelujah, yochai. Hallelujah, yochai. The old. Oh, see, I, I had imuna spell wrong. Look, Israel, I had it spell wrong, cuz I had that, I, I had that kataf in there, and it's not, it's a segal. Kataf, so it's imuna, na amuna. So you're right. I had it spelled wrong, so it's imuna. But it's emuna, emuna. Emuna. Emuna, emuna, emuna. Yesli imuna. The rabbi, right? The rabbi. Yesli, emuna. The ami. Look at this, the ami, we have. We have the mem has that extra dagesh in it. So we have be, or be. Be ammi, you gotta say that m twice, be ammi. Be ammi. Alright, be ammi, yesli, emuna, be. Ma. So, whoever was asking me about the olive and the vavs together, what sound it makes, it always makes the O sound. Ma om, and then whenever the mem appear, whenever the shiva appears. It, it, that right here, it indicates I'm breaking the syllables. Ma om reem. Lot of rules right here in this word, lot of rules in this word that, uh, we covered in class, in this word. Ma om reem. Look at this, the superscript E. The B. La, za, look at that, that dagesh and that z- siding, means you gotta say that siding twice. Lazadi king, meaning righteous. Who are the righteous? Alright, we are the righteous, ma om reem. Lazadi king, uh, the B lazadi king. Me om reem. Zadikin. Yes ma'am, me om reem, remember the, the mem and the shitty yun, me. Om. Reem. Me om reem. Zadikin. Hey, hazadi king. Same thing with this, uh, dagesh, haz. You gotta say that siding twice, haz, zadikin. Hazadi king. Anu, we have the shuruk. Whenever the shuruk. Appears at the end of a word, it always means us, our. Right, or we, right, it comes from the word anashnu. Anu, we hazadi king, the righteous, we are the righteous. Anu hazadi king. Kadash. So you tell me to learn, right, you learn new, learn anything new, like learn new.
It's asking if, if the student is new.
Yeah, are you a new student? What, what do you call, right? And it says. Cor, corine, right? That's, that's core. The, uh, olive is silent, corine. Lee, I am calls, right? Corine Lee. That's, that's, that's a column above the race, ah, ha, won. Sometimes you see ah, ha, won like this, uh-oh, it'll have, uh. Sometimes ah, ha, won will have a, a U, a, a V in it right there, right, ah, ha, won. But it doesn't have it in this instance, ah, ha, won. Ben Israel, not Ben Israel, I don't know why we say Ben Israel. Because it's, it's supposed to be ah, ha, won, Ben Israel. And you see that, that's, that's setting under Israel as well, you don't say Israel, you say Israel, right? Not Ben, it's bang. That's why, that's why they was always saying, come here bang, cuz then there was the A and the sound, and not an E, not an S sound. See, then you have Kane, Kane, zer. Shame. There you go, y'all are reading Hebrew. Now, took it off. But the same rules apply. Afo. You were close. Afo. Afo, tagar. Be meets paid Ramon, that's a city. What, what does gar mean? What does the prenominal prefix be mean? In, so, ani is I, am I, I live. Meets paid Ramon.
Okay.
What about this one here? Whenever the vav appears between two consonants, it always makes the O sound. Ani low mid.
Lictor.
Lickra. Li, 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 right, this is the same thing as kore, right, it's called. Yeah, uh, to read or to call, right, and what is this? Evries. I'm studying. And reading Hebrew, Hebrew. Afo.
I gotta go.
Yes, thank you, I gotta go too.
We're gonna end it right here, guys, I appreciate you calling, lalatovs, everyone.
Chat before you, uh, sign off, so you can get my email.
Yes ma'am.
Oh, let me add mine as well.